Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge. Our meeting of April 11th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Brynne.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitwer.
Here.
Holland Beck.
Here.
Cumbier. Phelps.
Yep.
McNally.
Here. Okay. Everybody's accounted for. If we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Don't do that. I am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Lisa, can you tell us about the posting of this meeting?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Omenson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, the Village website. The amended agenda was also posted in all the same locations.
Okay. Moving on, public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to speak about something that they have a concern with? Would like to share it with us? Even if we're going to discuss it later? Okay. All righty. Thank you. I guess we'll move on. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion and approval for the consent agenda. Any concerns? I have one. It reports, President's Report says $85 for three. I think that was $8,500. Is it typo? In paragraph six A.
Forget zero.
Yep, okay. All right. Anything else?
No, I didn't forget a zero. It's $8,500, comma, send the rocks, but.
Okay. All right.
We'd like them to give us $85.
All right.
Okay. All right. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. The minutes have passed. Reports. I want to get into two things here. We had the election this past week, and I'd like to congratulate both Chuck and Tim, you know, for being reelected to the Board of Trustees. Thank you for.
Thank you.
Your willingness to campaign. I know it was.
It was a tough battle.
It was, but, you know, you persevered. You were like cream. You rose to the top. Okay, enough. Paula's gonna be thinking I'm just off on a tangent here tonight.
Not just Paula.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to mention is last week, Thursday, there was a dinner, a cap dinner. It was at the high school, and the Fire and EMS Commission sponsored the dinner. I estimate that there was about 125 people there. Patty, you were there. Something like that. And it was just a dinner. To thank, from the Commission, to thank the residents and for the residents to be able to show their appreciation. Got into just a little bit of the history of the Commission when it was founded, what they're currently doing. There was some new equipment that was purchased. We had one of the EMTs come up and talk about that. I think it was a, it was just a light little presentation, and was well received. I think they had potatoes, some salad, and, you know, rolls and dessert.
Was this the community meal for the first Thursday?
Yeah. At the high school. So it was a well-attended event, so. Those are my two items here. Let's move on. Economic Development Committee.
We met last night. We talked about signage for the Western Signs staff, and staff is going to follow up on where we are on that. We talked about the MSA survey and gave our feedback for what we thought about the survey. And then that went to the Planning Commission as well, which then followed up on that. Then we talked about, I forget what else we talked about.
The pavilion.
Oh, yeah. The pavilion for the Lions Club. That went in front of the Planning Commission as well. So that'll be part of the Planning Commission piece. And then Kayla Sippo will be unfortunately stepping down. I want to thank her a lot for all of the work that she's done on the Economic Development Committee in the short time she was there, but she just has other priorities right now that she needs to pay attention to. So we do have an opening for a business owner in the area on the Economic Development Committee. So if anybody has any ideas or if anyone is a business owner and would like to be on the committee, just please reach out to office staff, and we'll see what we can do from there. Right?
You're gonna, you've agreed to.
I'll step in as the chair for now. Yep.
Everybody's all right with that? All righty. Thank you. Plan Commission.
We met last night after economic development. There were four items of a discussion, the first being the comprehensive plan and the survey that's going to go out. Lot of discussion about that. There's going to be a little more work on that to come. We're not quite ready to send out those surveys. And then, as Paula mentioned, the Lions Club presented to us, they would like to build a pavilion over by the fishing ponds. They would also like to make some paths back by the fishing ponds. And they also requested to pave the road to the fishing ponds, so. This will be on, not this today's, but the following board meeting. It just wasn't time. And then there was two other items of, one was an annexation. There's potential to annex some land into the village over, kind of by the elementary school. And then there was developments in the vineyards. There's a little parcel of land behind the vet clinic and the clinic that they wanted to gauge interest in putting two more apartment buildings in that little section. 24 to 26 units each. No, it was actually quite a.
It's not close. There's a big field between them.
So they just were there to gauge interest in that sort of development. And that was it.
I think there's going to be a special meeting with Plan.
Yeah. We're going to try something up for the survey.
25th of April.
Same developer with the apartments? With the existing apartments? What was his name?
Bill Ringa.
He wants to keep these ones, though, not sell them.
Intend to keep these ones.
So, okay, so what are they building out in front of the condos? And they've got a big hole right behind the vineyard sign. Is that part of the economic development that you would know about? As you come into the vineyards, right there, Chuck, where the condos are, there's a huge hole.
They are building more condos.
Wow. That's awful tight, right there.
Was it planned for that condo?
I don't know. It was directly. It's directly behind that stone sign.
Yeah, they planned to have a lot of condos in that small space.
That was all part of the original plan.
Yep, that was always part of the original plan. I remember thinking, that's an awful lot in that small space. But they did verify a fire truck could get in and turn around and things like that before we.
And we had rezoned that as a PUD, so it had smaller setbacks and so forth. Back when that was approved.
Okay. So, meeting on April 25th to go over the.
Yeah. Survey questions.
All right. So if anybody's interested, and I think that will, Gary, you have graciously volunteered to have that taped.
Volunteer, yes. Or voluntold?
Okay.
That's a military thing.
He's on top of it. Okay, let's move on to Public Works. Is there anybody here that can give us an update?
Hi, Todd Lord, Public Works, Cambridge. You mentioned the road to Lagoon Road. We were actually, no, that wasn't the road?
That wasn't me.
But anyway, we were thinking about repaving that, or not repaving it, but creating it and setting it up. So can we go ahead and do that? Or should we just kind of hold off on that?
Go ahead and do that, because if there was any kind of paving being done there, it would be in conjunction with the intersection or after that intersection. And that's 2024, 2025.
That's, that's.
There'd have to be some studies done.
So please fix it.
Thank you.
Please fix it.
I totally agree with you there. That's a five mile an hour road nearly.
Dean's like, yeah, it's rough going back there.
Yeah, yes, it is. We did get some of the potholes out of there, though. But we're working on brush cleanup now. We just started that. And we want to work on Lagoon Road. And Christiana's going to help us with that with her grader. He said, but you have to have stone first. He says, I can't grade what you have there. So we're going to get stolen to them, and we got the trucks set up to do that. We're kind of praying that there's not going to be any more snow because we've already disconnected some plows, and we got the trucks ready to go ahead and do that. And we're going to finish up that barn. We have to put three-inch stone and three-quarter inch stone in there so we can start putting some shelves in there and get that going. So we can start storing things in there. But we've been pretty busy. Still working on stuff to repair stuff, but we're getting her done. What's that?
Streets recap.
As soon as, as soon as they have a truck to bring it to us. Their truck broke down.
So they just can't deliver it? That's fantastic.
They can't deliver it because they have to pick up the one that we have.
Yep.
And drop off that one. And teach us, and teach us how to operate that one. So hopefully soon.
Potholes in town? How are you addressing?
We're working on it. And we're actually, we're actually.
Jarsburg Lane has a couple of big ones. Jarsburg Lane has a couple of big ones.
Oh, I'm sure it does. We're waiting on getting some fresh stuff.
Okay.
They're actually making it this week, and Friday we should be able to pick some up, if not Friday, Monday. Because we need to get going on that, too. But we've been, we've been pothole filling this one over here. It's got sinkholes in it. And we're talking three footers, so.
Motorcycles are out.
What's that?
Motorcycles are already out.
Oh, I know. I know. But we're trying, we're trying to keep that up to date and up to stuff. And everybody seems to be doing really well there. Everybody's working together, and we're getting a lot of stuff done. And it seems like everybody's finally.
Nice that got a good crew.
Got into that groove, so we're all, we're all doing that. And nobody likes to call in sick, so we're all there all the time.
I love that. Good.
Anything else?
Just as long as Spring Street over here, if you can make sure those holes get filled as.
Oh, yeah.
They wash out, I get it, you know?
Yeah, we're watching them. Because right now, we just have some really dried up old cold mix that we're using. And until we get the other, the next set of mix, that stuff will start to be repaired.
All right. Okay.
That's like an ASAP thing.
Oh, Mike.
Todd, do you have a schedule for the unidirectional flushing this year?
Derek will have that. Derek and Lee.
They work for you, right? Okay.
But they will have that. They should have that. You got all the information from Derek, what you needed?
Yeah.
Because I told them.
I'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
So we'll have a next meeting, next water meeting? Plan for unidirectional flushing?
I'll talk to Derek and Lee on that.
I think you should have.
It's springtime. It's time for that.
Well, I know he was doing some flushing for the school because they were refilling the pool.
But we just need a plan for the NSS.
Right.
Anything else?
Thank you, Todd.
Todd, thank you. You should.
Give our thanks to your crew as well.
All right. Let's move on. Village Office Updates. Ms. Mullen, what can you tell us?
We've been working with Omens. Have been giving them all the bank statements, all the financial stuff. They are working remotely, making good progress on the bank reconciliations. Once those are complete, they will shift the focus to the year-end numbers and working on the PSC report in the Form C. Vicki and Derek have been working hard, getting together all the information for the PSC report. These are new auditors, so they have a new online portal that the information goes into. So they've been working hard on getting that stuff to them. Worked with Allers, Quarles, and Brady and Huntington for the necessary loan paperwork for the well number three loan. That loan was closed today, so that is done. The election did go very well. We had 75% turnout. Nineteen coworkers here helping us that day. Twenty-nine different people were in for the vacant board position. We will talk about this a little bit later on the agenda. Lot of follow-up paperwork, being a local reelection, Board of Canvas, and notices and so forth. That'd have to be sent out, and then I'll be starting to enter into the state system. Today, Chris, Brynne, Steve Strauss, Derek and myself met with Rockdale, their engineers in MSA, to discuss the regionalization for the wastewater. Rockdale's looking to join in with Cambridge for wastewater, so starting to look at that. More stuff will be coming to the Water and Sewer Committee. There was also a meeting today with the contractor on well number three. They're waiting on some fats are a little backordered. They are anticipating May 1st starting date to start work out there.
Prefabricated tanks, right? Something like that.
Is that still waiting on?
What was that?
They're waiting on the prefabricated tanks?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Can we go back to the election results? You said we had a 75% turnout? How does that rate with the rest of the state? That is very high.
We always are high. I think with the Supreme Court and with the school referendum.
That brings people out.
Very high turnout. Busy all day.
I mean, that is amazing. Small, little community.
Dean out there shaking hands.
Dean was one of our chief inspectors, so.
Showing the flag. Vote here.
It was a good, busy day.
Thanks to all of you. I'd just be able to have 75% turnout. I mean, that's like bragging rights for the state of Wisconsin.
We are always above state averages.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Lisa? All right. Okay, thank you. Let's go on to bills. What's the summary here, Lisa?
First run was in the amount of $33,206.70. Second run was $9,936.64 for a total of $43,143.34.
Make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $43,143.34. $43.34?
Yeah, 43143.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion, a second. Discussion. Concerns, questions.
Do we normally spend $600 to post a position? So for the Deputy Treasurer? That seems really high.
I was looking at that, too.
Things have gone up.
That much?
Almost 700 bucks.
I'd have to look back what it was previous time.
Seems like a lot.
And was that? I don't have it in front of me. Was that specifically just for that ad?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's all it's described.
Yeah, we did have it. It wasn't just at the Cambridge Deerfield paper, too. It was in the Lake Mills as well for two weeks.
Did you say you were going to post it through that professional website, too? Is that part?
It is in the.
Of the 683?
No. It is free on the Clerk's Network Treasurers, Lea, Wisconsin Municipalities. We can talk if we want to have another personnel meeting. Eric did provide me the organization he had spoken about the last time. That's finance orientated. There is a cost to that, so if we want to have another personnel meeting to see if we want to do things differently, if we do want to spend money in different places and so forth.
We wouldn't have to have personnel meeting. We can just bring that to the full board.
To the board?
Yeah. My fault. I'm fine with that.
Okay. We can put that on the next agenda.
And the full board has to prove it anyways.
Yeah, to spend it.
I'll save you from an extra meeting, Lisa.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Two other questions for you. There's penalties for late payments and penalties for tax allowance? They were from previous year, but.
Yeah, they were from last year. We could tell on one of them, the taxes are due the Tuesday after payroll. They were submitted on Thursday, so we got a late fee on that one. The other one isn't real clear what the penalty was for. It gives you, it could be this, this, or this. And we're trying to figure out what. Judy and I looking at it, our best guess is we submit federal taxes after every payroll. Chrissy would do the quarterly paperwork to verify. We're not finding the backups to what was submitted to the federal government, so we can't look at it and say this number was wrong or it came off of the form wrong. The print-offs that we use has total wages, taxable wages, Medicare wages, Social Security wages. Our best guess and what we can see is that the wrong wage was put in on the. And that's what caused the. We're looking into it, but we haven't. But we thought we don't want to wait while we look into it and not pay the IRS. So we're paying it, looking into it, but we haven't quite figured that one out yet.
You said you had three?
That was it.
I will make one note, too, on the bills. You'll see, we did have to do a wire transfer. At the last board meeting, there were a number of bond payments that were approved. Checks were sent. They called us and said they hadn't received them yet. They needed wired to them that day. So we did do a wire. Mark and I signed off on the wire, made it send back the check then, once they received it, so.
Okay. Lisa, I have one, and it has to do with the fish ponds. And I think I know the answer, but there was a negative $777.87. It wasn't a positive amount.
Was it credit?
Yes, credit. It was a fish pond.
Split up the rest from the porta-potties?
Oh, so the bill had.
Yeah, it was negative 777.87.
Not the second round.
The first round?
I'm thinking it's a refund, or the way you split it. Maybe we paid it all, and then you got one half of that back and.
Who was the cut check cut to? Oh, Badger Lane. Oh, no. That is a credit that they gave to us. They had continued billing us after they were taken away for the winter. So we called them, saying, wait, we weren't supposed to be getting billed. And so they did give us a credit for the charges that they had charged us.
Okay.
When it was no longer there. So that was a credit that came directly from them.
All right. Do we have to split that, then, with the Lions Club?
It would come out when we bill them what was actually paid.
All right. And that, then, it'll get adjusted at that point? Okay.
Have the credit as well. But they haven't paid us yet, so.
All right. That's all that I have. Eric, you got the other ones I had noted. Anybody else have anything? Okay, we've got a motion and a second for approval of the bills in the amount of $43,143.34. Roll call, please.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitwer.
Yes.
Holland Beck.
Yes.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Phelps.
Yep.
Brynne.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, thank you. Let's move on to item 8A, the vacant Village Board seat.
Like I mentioned, Scott Waller did have the highest amount of write-ins with five. I'd sent him the paperwork as being elected. After much consideration, he did decline the position with work and so forth. He said he thoroughly enjoyed being on the board in the past, and when he retires, it may be something he'd be interested in again. But at the current time, it doesn't, doesn't fit for him. State law does say, you know, the post goes to the person with most votes. If they decline it, it is then an appointment by the board. So the board can do, you know, in the past, we've put out an ad that there's a vacancy if people are interested. Share a resume. We could reach out to people who had write-ins, with the exception of lizard people and Mickey Mouse, and, you know, see if they are interested. If so, you know, submit a resume for the board to consider. So it's up to the board how you want to proceed with the vacancy.
Do you have addresses on all these people with the two that you've?
If they are Village residents, we should.
Well, I don't think we have to ask Mr. Bruning or Whitwer.
No. Yes.
So that helps us.
I know somebody else who had a couple who is not interested.
So I think we should just do it the way we've always billed vacant positions, is post it in the paper that there's an opening and see who might be interested and do it that way. I think that's the easier way to do it. I mean, we've sort of established that as our pattern now for the last couple vacancies we've had. And this would be, this would be for any of you And this would be, this would be for any of you who think you might have somebody that might be interested, making sure you go out and rally your friends. I personally would like to see another woman on the board because, you know, I'm pretty sure women make up half of Cambridge and we are not properly represented on the board. So I would encourage if any woman out there wants to be on the board to submit. Yep, submit a letter of interest.
Do you?
Good point.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect that we advertise this and try to get somebody here?
Do we need a motion or?
Well, okay, so since I filled in the last one, how did you do it? I mean, I was contacted by y'all or by some of you on the board.
But you still submitted a resume.
I still did because that's what you required me to do.
Yeah, we did have it posted and.
Then I say we do the same thing.
Yep.
That way we have people who show up who want to do it. We start reaching out to those onesies and twosies.
And everybody else had one or two votes.
So I think Paula's correct. Is that the way we've been doing it?
I agree with her.
Okay, so Paula, you want to make the motion to go ahead and place the ad and?
Do we need a motion on that, Lisa, or is that, can we just?
It is spending money to put an ad in the paper.
All right, so I'll make a motion to place an ad for the vacant trustee seat on the board.
I second.
And follow that.
All right, any further discussion? Roll.
I will just ask timeframe, how long do we want to?
By the end of the month?
End of the month, so that for the first meeting in May, we'll put up the organizational meeting until May.
So that means we'll continue to operate, the people who are on committees will continue to be on those committees. Any concern about the committees that Ted is on that will need to change leadership of or anything? Was Ted chair of any committee?
Oh, we just stay, I just stay on then, right, of the committees or not?
Yeah, well, no, because he won't be a board member.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, we had talked about him staying on Water and Sewer because.
The date is next Tuesday. Let me verify that if the date is Tuesday or Monday that you, your term ends to see if you're officially a member of Water and Sewer next Tuesday. If, you know, if not, you can be there and.
Well, otherwise it's gonna be a citizen.
Yeah, well, but you still have to be appointed, so. If the end date of the term is on Tuesday, you would still, I have to see if it's Monday or Tuesday that new ones take it back Tuesday.
What is that?
New board mem, new, after an election, they take it back on Tuesday. So I don't know if your term ends on Monday or Tuesday. I have to verify that for the Water and Sewer.
The other one's the library, right?
No, I don't want to be in the library.
What I'm saying, you need a fill-in for the library.
The library, but that's tomorrow night, right?
You tell me. You tell me if it's tomorrow.
I think it normally is.
Yes, April 12th, Library Board. So Ted can still serve that?
Yes, you're still on that tomorrow. Oh, yeah, it is.
Well, how do you want to do COWC?
Oh, because that's next week too. You would not be an official member next week, but we will look at the, when we do, if there's a couple that you're going to stay on as a citizen member or we could take those up at the meeting on the 25th. But officially, next week, you would not be.
I could still show up and vote.
Be a voting member.
Yeah.
On voting member.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of times, there's been a couple of them that we just elected a sitting commission member back on the board, back on that commission. Gary Ratman, Steve Struths.
Village have to be approved by the village board, so.
So it's just a timing thing?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, okay, we've got a motion and a second. We're gonna spend some money and we're gonna run an ad. So we're back to roll call.
Whitwer.
Yes.
Holland Bet.
Yes.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Phelps.
Yes.
Brynne.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes, all right, thank you. Let's move on to item nine, GIS renewal.
Okay, this was in our last packet, I did get more information. Last year, we spent a total of eighteen thousand one hundred two dollars and fifty cents. It was for the initial implementation, the installation of the program, the training, the setup. We did do a few add-ons last year, setting up for sidewalk inspections, batch editor tools, attribute field changes were add-ons. So those are examples of what can be used with the maintenance budget. Any budget that's recommended by MSA are not fees that are automatically charged. It's more like a bank of time, if we need it, we can use it for them. It can cover technical support, additional training, minor updates. It can also include larger efforts, configuring new apps to support pavement management for phaser ratings and so forth, adding new subdivisions into the system and so forth. They come up with these numbers based on past client experiences and our current needs, what's going on in the community. They did say there's instances in the past where communities haven't used any of their support during a year. As our staff gets more used to the programs and entering data, entering new stuff, the use will go down. Anything, MSA would provide cost anything that they would be doing for us and wouldn't do anything until there's village approval. So it's not a set dollar amount that you will pay this this year. It's based on services and they would give us any fees when asked. You know, we'd like to add this to the GIS, what would it cost?
I don't know if there's anything else, do we?
So then do we want to make an motion to approve the GIS renewal?
The service contract.
Which is what, what is the price on that?
And again, it's just a rough estimate, what did they have, fifteen thousand in there?
It's on page six, five.
I'll make that motion, approve the GIS renewal.
Second.
But the fifteen is just an estimate?
It's an estimate, it won't be charged until work is done.
So.
We could start with fifteen.
Okay, hold on, so my question is, if fifteen is the estimate and we're approving this, are we saying, saying any maintenance up to that fifteen thousand dollars would be fine? But if the maintenance went over that fifteen thousand dollars, would it come back to the board?
I would think that's, you know, and it can be outlined in a motion. You know, we're not gonna come back to the board each time that they need.
Right.
Assistance to tweak this or that. If it's putting in the whole new Scott subdivision and it may cost two thousand dollars, do we want to come back to the board or do you want to give the leeway to spend up to that? You know, do you want to put a cap on when we reach an amount, we're coming to the board?
I think if it's over that fifteen thousand, that we should, we should know about it.
I agree. That threshold should be fifteen thousand. Where, you know, Public Works can work within that realm, but then if it goes over it, then they let us know.
Just gotta keep an eye on it.
Was this in the budget?
Yeah, there was under contracted services.
Fifteen thousand or? I don't remember.
I don't know the exact amount. I, you know, I know it was part of the budget, but. And it is split between Water and Sewer and Village, depending on what they're doing. Obviously, the sidewalk program is Village. If they're putting in the Scott Farms subdivision and putting in all the water and sewer lines and so forth into the system, that's gonna be built to Water and Sewer. So depending on what services. So the Village portion may not have been fifteen thousand, it may have been seven with the rest going to Water and Sewer.
Majority of it would be used for Water and Sewer, the location and stuff like that. And a lot of that stuff has already been put in for Scott Farms and surrounding areas. And we're still updating it because, you know, we were out looking for what it's worth, so. It happens.
So if we don't use that fifteen thousand, does that carry over? To next year's budget?
No, they just, they just wouldn't bill it.
They just wouldn't bill it.
Yeah, they don't bill it, so.
Okay, any other?
It's à la carte, à la carte services, right?
Yeah.
All right.
À la carte.
Roll call, please.
There's no money being spent, so we wouldn't need.
We haven't been billed anything.
Okay.
You can still ask for one though, right?
You can ask for one if you want one, but it's not money being spent.
Well, let's have one, I just, because we're authorizing fifteen, so we're gonna get a bill.
Holland Bet.
Can I just clarify? We're not gonna get a bill for fifteen thousand dollars?
I know that.
Okay.
We will get bills and, you know, we're authorizing up to fifteen.
Yes.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Phelps.
Yes.
Brynne.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitwer.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes, okay. All right. And you'll just keep us apprised of where we're at on this from time to time. Okay, correspondence. I see we have a couple of different pieces in here, Lisa?
Yep, I did include, we talked at the last time, the Cambridge Foundation grant. I can do a thank you letter to them for that. And again, we did receive our Tree City, it is our seventeenth year being a Tree City.
All right, good. Questions to staff, future agenda items, referrals. Next meeting, we will have Mr. Paul Blount with the EMS here, as well as Mark Cook from the Cambridge Area Fire and EMS Commission. And then I've also asked Mark to give us an update as to what's going on with the solar farm. And not so much the solar farm, but now there is, there's a company that's approaching the landowners about putting in windmills, so.
We knew that was gonna sort of happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Right on behind it.
It's right there.
Can we go back to the grant approval quick? I just wanted to ask Public Works Director, the amount that we were given, eighty-five hundred, where does that start and where does it end on Koshkaneon Creek for the cleanup?
Highway eighteen.
Yep.
To Main Street Bridge.
Main Street Bridge, okay.
Both sides.
All right, thank you. Are they clearing trees?
How far on each side then?
How far do they go?
Well, they're gonna go as far as possible. What they want to do, what they want to do is they want to go twenty feet back, but we're cooperating with them. The district itself, the River District and their Jefferson County, and they're allowing us just to clean it up and just, you know, minimize, minimize the damage. Because if you look, if you look at the other side, if you look at the other side and the piles, I'm asking them to at least flatten it out and don't leave huge piles.
Right.
Because we have to be careful over there because we have the, we have the water and sewer crusher lines coming through there too.
All right, thank you.
Other future agendas, we will have the welcome signs, the Lions Club pavilion. We can talk about the treasure position. Then we can do a couple appointments for Water and Sewer and COWC while we're waiting before the organizational meeting. I do want to mention too, and we're getting done nice and early for once, the library, Friends of the Library is having their chocolate event in the library today. They have extended an invitation to village board members. So if you'd like to stop over there after the meeting, you are invited to step in.
There's plenty of cake left, Dean.
Did you have a piece already, Mark?
No, but he, I saw Dean come over here.
It's all about the cake.
All right.
Don't turn down an invite.
Okay. Okay, moving on, upcoming meetings, Public Works to be determined, April 12th, Library Board, which is tomorrow night, April 18th, Water and Sewer, April 25th, Village Board. And then we also have on April 25th, the Planning Commission.
Yep, Planning Commission.
To go over.
And the organizational will be pushed back to May. And a reminder, I did send out an email for requests for committee assignments. Couple of you have gotten them back, thank you. If you can get those back to me. And sent an email with possible dates for Public Works.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, all right, a couple other items here. Before we take on item thirteen, Ted, I wanted to thank you for your service to the village of Cambridge and being a stalwart here on the Board of Trustees. You've helped us get through a number of issues and we really appreciate it.
And I don't remember how many years it was.
I don't either. So it's, it has, you've done a great job, thank you. And we wish you, you know, lots of fun and you and Mary and retirement.
Thank you.
All right, so thanks very much. Okay, anybody else here, thirteen?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, thank you very much.